Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, January 10th, 2024. And I will note for the record that myself and Commissioner Jones are present in the NatU Hill Room, and Commissioner Githens is joining us via Teams. Good morning, everyone. And next, we have our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And we do have a change to our agenda item, please.
Move to table, item F, Stop Grant Agreement for 2023-24.
I will...
A second?
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Githens. Although I couldn't hear her, so we might want to check on that. And this is going to be continued until the 24th of January. Okay. Any comments from my colleagues? Okay. All those in favor of... I'm sorry.
Don't we have to take roll since we're...
Oh, yeah, well, I was... Yeah. So, all those in favor of continuing the stop grant agreement for 2023-2024 to the January 24th meeting? And Ms. Purdy will call roll, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. And now, we have our department updates. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. So, just a few things for you. Respiratory illnesses across the state are now listed as high. Emergency room visits due to COVID and flu have seen increases. We do still have free COVID tests available at the main office in the Health Department for free. January is Radon Awareness Month. We do have the radon testing kit applications that are located on the Health Department website. And as a reminder, the department is now able to provide Quit for Life Tobacco Cessation referrals for support. You can call 812-349-2150 for more information.
Great, thank you so much. Comments or questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens? Okay. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, now it's time for public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. And if you could let us know if you are a Monroe County resident when you offer your public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, we have another department update. One more thing, sorry. Thank you. Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. Good morning. Indiana Code requires a statement of the county's receipts and expenditures must be presented annually for the preceding calendar year. This statement must include the name of total compensation paid to each county officer, deputy, and employee, and the information must also be submitted to the Indiana Gateway, posted in three locations in the county, and published in the manner prescribed in statute. I'm providing this report to you today and have fulfilled the other reporting obligations to satisfy the statutory obligation.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Gregory. Appreciate that, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. And Chief Shepia Parker, did you have a department update for us?
Very briefly.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I forgot to ask around. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you for allowing me. Just very quickly, just wanted to pass on just a few little tidbit things. We've recently experienced some equipment failures there at the facility, one being our stove, half of our stove kind of went, decided it wasn't going to cook anymore right around Thanksgiving. And then, we've had this dryer issue that we've had a dryer that's been sitting there, I think, inoperable for probably a few years. So, we've been talking with Angie about those things. And I just wanted to publicly thank her and the Commissioners because I know that we're working really hard to get in those things. So, she's really helped us maneuver through that process. And those two things, I think we can all agree, are pretty sound, important things for helping us run a constitutional facility. So, I really, really appreciate when those issues come along, the speed and the help that we get to push those things through. The second thing is, I wanted to thank the Commissioners. We've been watching the roof so far, so good. I don't want to jinx anything, but I go up there and look at that occasionally. It looks really, really nice. It's holding up. I know that you all did a lot of work on that. I know that Dave worked really, really hard on that, finding the contractor. It was a long, protracted process, but we've not had any issues with that here to four. We've had a really good test over the last few days.
Yeah.
So, that's working. We've been talking about this ceiling there in the inmate worker area, that that has deteriorated tremendously. I just spoke with Dave this morning, and I think we've got a... I'll call it a fix, but you know, it's an aging facility that we can't fix everything exactly what we'd like to, but I think we're going to be able to at least remedy that situation so that we don't have anything that's unsanitary or unsafe. So, we're moving very, very much in the right direction. And I would like to... I know that President Thomas, you came over and walked through the facility. I wanted to thank you for that. And some of those things are stemming from that visit. So, thank you very much for that.
Sure.
For spending the time there with us. So, you know, just kind of a little update there. The things that are moving in a positive direction are jail population is starting to move up here. We're sitting at 250 today, which is as high as it's been this, since we've been there. So, it's kind of the ebb and the flow of it. But what's important about that is that we note that because it does ebb and flow, that sometimes we get lost in when our population's down, that we have room, we have able to manage things a little bit better. When it gets to this population, things get really, really tight, and we're using every cell we have, every space we have. So, everything, we've got to have everything up to speed when this hits us. So, just kind of a thank you and a little awareness things. So, again, any questions that I can answer for you?
All right, thank you so much. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I noticed on the claims for today that we saw the claims for the roof repairs, so I'm glad that that's happened. And hopefully, that'll stop additional deterioration of that ceiling in the inmate worker area. But thank you for coming over and sharing that information with us.
Yeah, I think that's one of the single biggest safety issues that we've got resolved here, and that took a lot of cooperation from a lot of people to make happen.
It did. Yeah, and I want to say Mr. Gardner, Mr. Kreider, both for working on that as well. It's huge help. And yeah, it was nice to see that new roof when I was there. I think it had just been finished and... But also, to see the other things that need to get done.
Yes.
And there are... You're right, you know, you don't want to... It can't be perfect right now, and it can't even be very good at times. But we have to make sure that we can maintain the facility for the duration, as they say.
We can't sacrifice good for perfect.
Right, exactly.
You know, as long as we're sitting on good and we're making efforts and we're making progress and we're moving towards that constitutionality part of that, I think it speaks well for all of us that we recognize it and we're not just sitting there, you know, wringing our hands about what we're going to do about it.
Right, exactly. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate the update.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Any other departments before I forget to ask again who have an update for us? I'm looking on Zoom as well. Okay. Okay. All right, with that, we will now move to public comment. Thank you all for being patient. And this is for items that are not on the agenda, limited to three minutes per person. And please note whether or not you are a Monroe County resident.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tom McLaughlin Jr. In addition to being a Monroe County resident, I'm also the executive director of what I'm here to announce is now called the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County, formerly the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District. I know that the Board of Commissioners, as members of our Board of Directors are aware, this has been a long process to get to this point. But we are excited about this change. We really think we... The new name, we had a new logo, kind of a different image, you know, better projects who we are and what we do. And you know, our statutory mission at its core has always been to reduce the amount of material going to final disposal, and that is the core of everything that we try to do. Do want to just mention, though, for the residents, for the people that use our facilities, programs, and services, you really should not notice any change in how we operate and what we have available to you. That's all going to remain the same. Just, you know, there'll be some new signage. Bear with us over the next few weeks as we get signs up and installed. But fundamentally, our, you know, our programs and services are not changing. But while I'm here and have the opportunity, I do want to point out two changes unrelated to our rebranding that we will be implementing soon. Our paper, the way that we collect paper at our facilities is going to consolidate, in essence. We've been working with our vendor, and we are going to consolidate most all of our paper into one mixed paper bin, which will hopefully make it a lot simpler for the users of our facilities to figure out what goes in which bin. Should also help us with efficiencies of managing that material and getting it hauled. The other more big change that's coming, our bulky item program, that schedule is going to move to a monthly rotation at the four rural recycling facilities. And that will actually begin the second week of February, when those bins rotate, the second week of February, to our West Side facility out on Orde Road. They will remain there for the duration of the month. And then, in March, they will go to our Dillman Road, our South Side facility on Dillman Road, and in April, to our Northeast facility on Bethel Lane in New Unionville. And then, in May, we'll come back... Excuse me. We'll come back to the Ellisville facility. It's the same rotation we've been doing on a weekly basis over the years. We're just going to a monthly rotation. They'll be there for the full month. That will eliminate... We have a handful of weeks through the year where you have a fifth Sunday or Monday, excuse me, in the month where the service previously has not been available. So, it will eliminate those days where the service is not available for residents.
Thank you so much. That's really good news. And any comments? Commissioner Jones?
I just really appreciate the new name. I do think it's quite an improvement, and also, the rebranding, I think, is going to be very effective. So, thank you for taking that on, and also, thank you to the CAC, Community Action.
Community Advisory.
Community Advisory, sorry.
Our Citizen Advisory Committee was very involved in the process of rebranding and getting us to this point, and they do deserve some recognition for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a good point. Commissioner Githens?
Well, I actually appreciate the fact that we're moving to a monthly drop off for bulky items because it does eliminate the five or more times a year that there's nothing available for our residents to use. And I think the way you've designed the new schedule, Mr. McLaughlin, I think things should move very smoothly.
And there'll be signage up at the location where the bulky item bin is not located to let people know where they can find it in case they go to the wrong one?
Yeah, we actually have, in addition to all the sign changes, some new signs that will be going up, one of which, at all facilities, there will be a sign that will show that monthly schedule for the bulky item rotation.
That'd be great, yeah. And thank you so much, Mr. Glasson and your staff, for making this all happen. This is a lot of work. It's a lot more work than people think. And also, I want to thank Commissioner Githens, too, for her role on the Executive Committee because that Executive Committee had a lot of work to do, too. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment for items not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Earlier, Mr. Shelton had his hand up. I don't know if he still wishes to speak.
Yeah, I don't see it. No. Well, if he wants to come back, we certainly can insert a comment from him at any point on something that's not on the agenda because he is a regular visitor and contributor to our meetings. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for January 3rd, 2024.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on the approval of the minutes for January 3rd, 2024?
Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, January 10th, 2024, and payroll January 12th, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, good morning.
Good morning again, and thank you. The accounts payable claims docket for today, January 10th, 2024, totals $2,151,016.09. The payroll docket for Friday, January 12th, 2024, totals $2,196,147.67.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, but I had made a note to make a comment on the repairs done on the roof to the Justice Building after seeing it in the claim, so, yeah.
Excellent. Is there any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on approval of claims docket accounts payable January 10th, 2024, and payroll January 12th, 2024?
Certainly. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. Well, we did not receive any reports this week, but we will now move on to new business, if you would please.
Move approval of Go Express Travel Transportation Agreement. Fund name: County General, Park Nonreverting Capital and Park Nonreverting Operating. Fund numbers: 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $6,000.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. And I believe we have Mr. Robertson here today to...
Yes, good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
All right, just we're trying to keep everybody on their toes, I think. Okay, so this first agreement is with Go Express Travel in an amount not to exceed $6,000. We've contracted with Go Express for the past few years for our Car State Camp field trips and various day trip programs out of the county. They've been an excellent partner, flexible, and, more importantly, available. So, we're hopeful that we can continue working with them in 2024. But by all means, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm just very pleased that Parks is able to do this.
Commissioner Githens?
I think it's a good addition to what the Parks and Rec Department offers.
No, it's really, really a useful thing. So, it's great to bring this forward early in the year and to be prepared. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in Teams. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on the Go Express Travel Transportation Agreement?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving, Inc., On Call Agreement. Fund name: County General, Parks Nonreverting Capital and Parks Nonreverting Operating. Fund number: 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Robertson, would you tell us about this one, please?
Yes, sure thing. So, as was mentioned, service agreement with Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving. This is an on-call agreement in an amount not to exceed $30,000. The intention of this agreement is for repair services for any sort of pavement in the park system, greenways, sidewalks, parking lots, you name it. Some examples could be crack ceiling, hole patching, asphalt court improvements. I think the on-call structure is beneficial for us. It allows us to deal with these things in a timely fashion. I think we all know what happens when you step on a crack. I've not personally broken anybody's back, but we like to avoid it and deal with these things as quickly as possible. Sorry, that was my attempt at a joke.
Oh, we were chuckling. Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate you being proactive about this.
Yeah, and I agree, the on-call agreements are great because you're not worrying about a repair that needs to be done and getting it through a contract through the Commissioners' office, although we meet almost every week, but it's still a weight that you shouldn't have, so, thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on the Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving, Inc., On Call Agreement?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our next item, please.
Move approval of Elite Electric LLC Light Fixer Installation for the Sheriff's Department. Fund number: 2022 Geo Bond Capital Projects. Fund... That was fund name. Fund number: 4815, in an amount of $1,980.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Elite Electric LLC in the amount of $1,980 to improve poor lighting situations in the Sheriff's Office Training Room and the Public Entrance Office, Seventh Street, by removing a combined 12 fluorescent light fixtures and replacing them with efficient LED light fixtures.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just pleased that you're moving to the more efficient LED.
Commissioner Githens?
I like what's being done as well.
Yeah, this is... It's very cavernous in those areas, and it's one of the things that Mr. Gardner showed me when I was on my tour, so it's a good thing to get this done. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on Elite Electric LLC Light Fixer Installation for the Sheriff's Department?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. And our next item, please.
Move approval of Vet Environmental Engineering LLC Visual Inspection and Indoor Air Sampling for the Highway Garage. Fund name: County General, Fund Number: 1,000, in the amount of $2,517.84.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider?
This request is to accept the agreement submitted by Vet Environmental Engineering LLC in an amount not to exceed $2,517.84 to provide indoor air sampling services at the Monroe County Highway Garage. They'll be providing two canisters, and they'll both be in the up and downstairs office areas.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, do you... I'm just curious about what they're sampling for.
Well, it's not mold. What may be happening is we may be pulling in some sewer gases from the vent on the roof into our HVAC system. So, we're going to remedy that. Odors are hard to track down sometimes, and this is where we're going to start. We're going to extend the vent stack on the roof to the maximum allowable amount, brace it, and then, we're going to test the air quality after that.
Great, thank you. That certainly sounds like something that's going to be highly appreciated.
Yeah.
Commissioner Githens?
How long will it take to complete the sampling?
I have that information in the proposal, which I don't have in front of me, I'm sorry. I can get that to you, though. I mean, I think the canisters stay for a day, and then, they take it... And they do it... They want it to be a normal operating situation, and I believe they leave them there for 24 hours. So, it'll be during a workday. But I don't know how long it takes for the results to come back. It's been pretty fast on other projects.
Yeah. It's important to get this done, so thank you for doing this. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill Room. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll on Vet Environmental Engineering LLC Visual Inspection Indoor Air Sampling for the Highway Garage?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Title IV Grant Extension. Fund name: Title IV, Fund Number: 8117.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I am not sure who is presenting this today. Oh, there you are. Ms. Turner King, good morning.
Hello. So, I was just asked to present this, but it's okay. So, what's before you is approval of the Title VII Grant that the PD... The Public Defender's Office has in regards to CHINs cases. So, a little background, the Public Defender's Office or Monroe County participates in a reimbursement program with the state. If they meet and maintain certain criteria, the reimbursement is 40% of all expenses for our cases, for their cases, except for misdemeanors. So, they get reimbursed for felonies and CHINs. And CHINs cases are child's... Children in need of services. And along with that is also termination of parental right cases, so TPRs. So, public defenders get appointed on both of those types of cases, and then, the state reimburses their office for 60% of the expenses. And the state would like to continue doing that grant for two years with your approval.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just pleased we keep on getting this.
Commissioner Githens?
I was... I guess it's unusual for us to sign off on these when we don't have an amount, but hopefully, whatever we do goes down from year to year, but I understand that these are things we can't predict very well.
It's not a fee.
Right. It's... We get reimbursed. Right, and it's 60%, and we don't know what the expenses are until they happen.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. And there's no cap, apparently. So, that's the important part. Maybe that's the part that we need to highlight, that there isn't a cap. Yeah, excellent, thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the Title IV Grant Extension?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much for presenting. Appreciate it. You did great. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant hazmat IQ training for local first responders. Fund name: Hazardous Material 20.703. Fund number: 8174 in a grant amount of $17,850.
And we, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Baker here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to announce that the department was recently awarded a grant for the Indiana Department of Homeland Security under the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Program. This grant funds will go towards funding a hazmat IQ training course for local first responders to help them fleshen up their skills in hazmat.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I assume also that if there are new hires, that this will be more than just a repressure. I appreciate the fact that these are, continue to happen.
Yeah, it's really important considering truck and train traffic that goes through our community and also the manufacturing that we have, so this is really, really important. So I appreciate that your office received and asked for and received this grant, so. It's great for our community. Hopefully, we won't need it.
Yes, hopefully we won't.
Yeah. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Hazmat IQ Training for Local First Responders?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Duke Energy Grant for Weather Radios. Fund name: Emergency Management Duke Grant. Fund number: 4938 in the grant amount of $5,500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Baker, would you tell us about this one, please?
Yes, so we are also happy that the department was recently awarded a grant for the Duke Energy Foundation. This grant will go towards to purchasing several all-hazard NOAA letter radios to help provide an effective ar- device to residents of Monroe County that are within high-risk areas such as mobile homes, parks, and that may face major impacts during a severe weather. Interested Monroe County residents may reach out to the Emergency Management Office to inquire about a radio.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just very pleased this is happening.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I was in touch with Mr. Baker about this earlier and it sounds like they're doing some creative things, thinking about like raffle at the county fair and some other ways for residents to obtain these. So this is very creative and a very creative way to market the program as well.
Yeah, it's important considering we've had tornadoes here in the last couple of years and it is a serious threat and these weather radios are lifesavers. They really are, so I'm glad that this program's going to happen and I appreciate that folks can contact your office to get one if they need one. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the Duke Energy Grant for Weather Radios?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. And one more.
Move approval of the Monroe County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan Renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Baker, would you tell us about this, please?
Yes, so the office has been reviewing and revising the CEMP, Monroe County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, which is the framework for the county's response to all hazard incidents. We make sure it's all updated and accurate for every five years. And so every five years, the CEMP has to be approved and adopted by the Emergency Management Advisory Council and the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. On December 5th, 2023, the CEMP received approval and adoption by the Monroe County Advisory Council. So we are just asking the revised Monroe County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan to be approved and adopted by the County Commissioners. We do have a couple of collections that we'll be working through. We have the signature page on the ESF Emergency Support Functions that we'll be updating after.
Yes, I was going to say that did need to be updated. Yes.
There's been a couple of changes.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I really appreciated the list of acronyms that you included. I have big problems with acronyms.
We have all the acronyms, yes. And they get more and more.
Yeah. Commissioner Githens?
Well, I was in touch with Mr. Baker about this also and I apologize for being so late in getting to him. Our packets didn't get to us until recently. But in addition to updating the signatures, we need to update the population at IU. It's listed at 35,000 and this year IU had an enrollment of over 47,000, which kind of changes things. That's a huge increase.
Yeah, and so my question is, can this document be updated for those kinds of changes whenever they're known? Or do we have to go through a whole process to make those kinds of changes?
So this document is, it has to be approved every five years and adopted, but each year we revise it and make changes.
Okay.
So I don't see a major issue with that.
Okay, yeah.
It's how you guys.
Right, and I appreciate Commissioner Githens pointing out the population of IU. I missed that one, but I did notice that, and this is related to Mr. McGlasson today, that we don't have a solid waste district anymore. We have a waste reduction district. So that needs to be updated as well. So if you could see to that, that would be useful. But the bones of it, right, are spot on and really useful and it's important for everyone to understand their responsibilities.
Yes.
So appreciate that. All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right.
May I also say that I think it's important to point out to the public that this is a collaborative effort. This isn't just the Emergency Management Department. This is our Health Department. This is our Technical Services Department. This is, this offices within the city of Bloomington. There are a number of people that are involved in any kind of emergency situation.
That is a, that is a good point and it involves our healthcare system. It also involves law enforcement officers and agencies. It involves, of course, the fire departments, hazmat. It's, there, yeah, there are so many parts of the community that come together in an emergency. That's a really good point, Commissioner Githens. Thank you. All right, seeing no public comments. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on approval of the renewal of Monroe County Conference Emergency Plan?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of an amendment to Monroe County Code, Chapter 260, Courthouse and Grounds Rental, an amendment to Monroe County Government Courthouse Building and Grounds Application.
Second, sorry.
That's right, I was going to say, Commissioner Githens?
I didn't fall asleep, honest.
Ms. Purdy, would you tell us about this?
Yes, this is simultaneously amending both our Chapter 260 of our Monroe County Code as well as the Monroe County Courthouse General Guidelines for Building and Ground Use Form. And this is reflecting increased charges for event cleanup and accurately reflecting the charges associated with security if an event runs longer than the reserve time.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Just on the fee schedule for the building and grounds use for the, it says event cleanup, but on that actual fee schedule, it only, doesn't say the event cleanup is for inside the building? So is it for the inside or inside and outside?
Generally, this is just something that is assessed for inside use. We have not had an experience where we've needed assistance with cleanup on the outside.
Should that be made then very specific on this form for people? I guess is what I really wanted to get to.
We haven't had a problem, but I mean, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, so.
Yeah.
We could certainly add a note that we generally don't get security for outside. Not that we can't have that. I think that the people who are having an event could require. Okay, so let me think about this. Generally, the outside events have not been charged with an event cleanup. I think that what would happen in that case would be that if it was so bad that we would have to, we would just take their deposit. But we don't, we don't have anybody who does the work other than our own maintenance. This is an outside entity that performs this service and so this ensures that they get paid. But it's our staff that cleans the outside if there's any problems. So it's entirely up to you, but we've not had it. Not that that makes it right, but we've not ever had it and I will tell you, we've not needed it, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving this as it is because it's okay to be general and flexible. But.
It does reference that the courthouse or the grounds shall leave the property. So it does state that it can go either way.
Right, okay. What are your thoughts on this, Commissioner Jones?
I'm okay leaving it the way it is if there's never been a problem.
That'll take care of it. Now we'll have one. But what would happen, because again, that would be our staff, right? We're not going outside of Monroe County and so we could just address it through their deposit.
Yep, okay. All right, yeah, I agree. I think it's, there's enough flexibility in the language that I think we could address whatever we had to. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the Amendment to Monroe County Code, Chapter 260?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item is Resolution 20, is that, are we doing this one? This is still going to be on? Okay, great, thank you.
I think so. Move approval of Resolution 2024-02 Regarding Waiving Conflict of Interest.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and I heard a second very faintly, but Commissioner Githens did offer a second, yes. And we have Mr. Cockrell joining us via Teams. Good morning, Mr. Cockrell.
Good morning. As you are aware, Margie Rice used to work in our office and now she is working for the city of Bloomington. She has requested and we've discussed in the office about a waiver of claims from a legal, ethical standpoint. What this document says is that any, any, any work that she did with the county that would somewhat influence her work at the city would be waived unless, there are certain things within the rules of ethics that you just cannot waive, but to the extent they can be waived, this would waive those. Our office does not see any real conflicts. I mean, I don't think there's any litigation or anything like that with the city of Bloomington and Monroe County that exists or that she has worked on. But there are some areas where we work together such as interlocals. I think the one that probably comes closest is our dispatch interlocal, but at this point, that's much more of a budgetary thing as opposed to any kind of advantage she would get from representing both parties. So our office is comfortable with this, but this basically provides her coverage so that she can demonstrate that she, to this, to the state judiciary that she is following the ethical guidelines required.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I just wish Margie Rice the best with the city.
Yeah. Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, it's nice to personally know the new chief counsel over there, so, great.
Yeah, it's, she's going to be a great asset to city government and we're really pleased for her and this is just some paperwork that we need to do as Mr. Cockrell points out. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on Resolution 2024-02?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. All right, move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve agreed motion to modify the party's requirements to move to dismiss case and agreement to extend private settlement agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and with all of this lawyerly language, we have Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, we've had a private settlement agreement with, through the federal courts, with the Indiana Civil Liberties Union for the, essentially the population of our jail since 2009. We have, we have extended that on a yearly basis for the past probably decade. And so this is just extending it another year. Mr. Falk with the ICU has toured our jail facility. We keep him up to date on how we are looking at creation of a new jail facility. And so he is comfortable that we are making progress towards doing a, doing the job and providing a better facility, so this is extending it one more year. And then next year, we'll probably sit and talk about another extension because I do not believe we'll have a new facility within a year.
Yes, good point. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Just thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for getting this extension.
Yeah, I appreciate that and that was exactly my point, was that we're going to have to do this again next year. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the agreed motion to modify party's requirements to move to dismiss case and the agreement to extend private settlement agreement?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. Did you guys want to reference that, I'm sure that the sheriff had been involved in this conversation also?
Didn't.
Did you guys want to make any comments? Sorry.
Oh, that's why. Chief Deputy Parker, did you want to add anything about the settlement agreement with ICU?
Running up the podium without being invited, so.
Sounds true.
Yes, I, we, we had a really nice walkthrough with jail with Mr. Ken Falk. I think he was very, very pleased with the progress that were being made. I think the point I would like to make that as we continue this agreement, I think it's important that we know. I, I think it's important that we note that this in no way lessens the need and the insistence, I would say, that we move forward on this new facility with all due haste. Because I, I just, I think it's important that everybody understands that this is out of the good graces of the ACLU, that we are still looked at, that that facility is not gonna be adequate into the very near future. And I'm pleased that he was in agreement with us, that we're, we're trying, but we can only do this for so long. So that's kind of my comment to this thing, that we don't, we don't, we give anybody the impression that we are, we're putting the pause button on here or slowing down here because we've gotta go full speed ahead here, I think, so.
That's a really good point, I'm glad you raised it, thank you. And thank you for facilitating the tour.
Yes.
That's an important part of this. All it says basically is that there's at least satisfaction for another year, that we are moving toward a goal of getting a new facility. And clearly, yes, we cannot pause. We, we, we have to act with due diligence, but yet, at the same time, not in a way that creates mistakes. So it is a slow but steady and forward-moving process. And, you know, as you know, it's got so many components to it. But we do appreciate that, that your assistance, your office's assistance with this, and sheriff's assistance in getting this done.
Yeah, and they're, they're watching very closely. We all need to know that, we need to be present, you know, that needs to be in the forefront of our minds. But, you know, I've known Mr. Falk for several years, and he's a, he's a reasonable person. And he was, he was very much so in our discussions with him. I think it was a couple of weeks ago when he came down, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on it.
Thank you, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-01, Amendment to Monroe County Code, Chapter 760, Drainage Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Turner King joining us again, thank you.
Hello, um, so the item before you is to amend Chapter 76, or 760, as it pertains to the drainage board. The drainage board is responsible for tasks that include, but are not limited to, interpreting drainage easements, assisting the MS4 Coordinator in reviewing developments and providing comment on relevant ordinances. Those tasks require a specific level of expertise and technical knowledge. So an effort to attract and retain board members with that required knowledge. The amendment before you increases the per diem that would those individuals would pay. And the language that is being amended in the ordinance is that members would receive compensation in accordance with the annual salary ordinance. So last night at the council meeting, the council increased the range for board members per diem from, it was just 25, and now it's $25 to $100. So board members would receive $100 for meetings that they attend, and they would not receive compensation for canceled meetings.
Or meetings they don't attend.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, as a member of the drainage board, certainly non-expert member, it is very impressive the amount of knowledge that these people, very technical knowledge that these people have to display to mostly keep our county from flooding and also erosion and things like that. So thank you, I'm sure they're very appreciative of this.
Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, I, I think it's really important that folks understand too that if you are an existing homeowner or business owner and other things are built near you, they can really impact your, your facility. And so we actually are in a situation where we may be buying up a few homes because they are now just being flooded out on a regular basis. And that's what's happened if you don't pay proper attention to these things. And also, we have these car features that make a difference too in, in our area.
Thank you. I'm glad to see this is getting done. It's something that was done for the plan commission, and that is related specifically to the fact that we drive around the county to look at all of these petition sites, and it does take a toll, wear and tear on our vehicles. And, but this is an important thing to acknowledge, the significance of their contributions. So I appreciate that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I'm sorry, Team screen, or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on Ordinance 2024-01?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Githens.
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and we have a plethora of appointments, and Commissioner Jones has graciously agreed to do this, so thank you.
So I move approval of Davis O'Gwin to the Alcohol Beverage Board for one year. The term expires on 12/31/24. William R. Pugh to the Aviation Board, four-year term expires December 31/27. The Mike Campbell to the Convention and Visitors Commission, a one-year term expiring December 31/24. Greg Travis to the Economic Development Commission, one year expires February 1/25. Traffic Commission Amanda Turpencine, two years, December 31/25. Board of Zoning Appeals Pam Davidson, four years, expires January 1/28. Angie Purdy to the Child Protection Team, one year, expires January 1/25. Neil Goswami and Lee Jones to the Environmental Commission, two-year terms that expire on February 1/26. Polly Root, Sturgeon Devon Blankencamp and Deborah Reed to the Historic Preservation Board of Review, three-year terms for each of them. It expires on January 1/2027. Steve Kuver to the Human Rights Commission, a two-year term that expires January 31/2026. Angie Purdy and Jeff Cockrell to the Internal Control Oversight Committee, two-year terms expiring January 1/26. Josh McConnell to the Licensing Board, a four-year term expiring January 1/28. Joyce Poling, Kelly Whitmer and Penny Githens to the Parks Access to Recreation Endowment Advisory Committee, four-year terms expiring January 1/28. Scott Ferris to the Plan Commission, a four-year term expiring January 1/28. Richard Martin and Randy Cassidy to the Redevelopment Commission, one-year terms expiring January 1/25. Penny Githens, Whitney Meeks, Steve Malone, Ashley Collins, Melanie Rebecca Vestlage to SUDAC, I'm not gonna try to come up with the acronym.
Substance Use Disorder Awareness.
Thank you. Two-year terms for each of them expiring January 1/26. Women's Commission Susan Hingle and Molly Otto, two-year terms expiring January 1/26. Julie Thomas, and, and, yeah, Julie Thomas to the MPO. Lee Jones, continuing service on the Drainage Board, and Julie Thomas, continuing service on the Plan Commission. And Drain, and Terry Quillman to the Drainage Board, a four-year term expiring December 31/27.
I was stuck in all that.
Yes, thank you so much for reading that long list, and thank you for the second. I just want to note that we really appreciate everyone's service on boards and commissions, past and future. It's really important for our community members to share their experience, expertise and wisdom, and to give up their valuable time to benefit Monroe County, and we really do appreciate that. And I don't know if my colleagues have other comments to make?
No, I don't.
Okay, with that, Ms. Purdy, would you please call the role on the appointments as listed?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. I will note first off in our announcements that Monroe County Government will be closed on January 15th for the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, and we will not be meeting next week, the 17th. As usual, our next meeting will be January 24th, and we will be providing a state-of-the-county message on that date. I also want to note that with the extreme weather being predicted for the next week, that our emergency management department has established warming stations that will be open from Saturday, January 13th to Saturday, January 20th. This is from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No food, no water, no showers, no sleeping, but it is a warm place to go. And these places include the Ellisville Fire Department, Bloomington Fire Stations 1 and 2, and for the Monroe County Fire Protection District, South Kennedy, South Strain Ridge Road, Rockport Road, Old 37 North, and South Kirby are the locations. You can find more information out at the emergency management page on our county website. And it's a good idea, if you haven't yet, to sign up for resident alerts at co-monroe.in.us. It'll keep you posted about things like the weather and any highway issues related to it. Just go to that, our website, click on the megaphone, and enter your information. That, also a note that vaccines are available at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, and that you can also get test kits for COVID-19 at both the Public Health Clinic and at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th Street. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissions. Specifically, we are looking for applicants for the Redevelopment Commission, the Traffic Commission, and the Women's Commission. But any, if you have an interest in any board or commission, it's a good idea to go ahead and apply. Go to co-monroe.in.us, and you can enter boards in the search box and find it, or it's on the commissioner's page as well. Just a reminder to folks that we do have virtual office hours each month on Teams. Just go to the calendar at co-monroe.in.us for dates and times. And the next blood drive with the Red Cross is Thursday, February 15th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Friday, February 16th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, and sign up at redcross.org. And we have extended the assistance fund for county residents who need help paying for rent or utilities. Call your township trustee for further information. And in addition, we have made available, with the help of the council, $400,000 in ARPA funding to provide rural housing repair. And this is for low and moderate income Monroe County homeowners, not for rentals, but for owner-occupied buildings outside the city of Bloomington. And you can contact your local township trustee for more information. And if you live in the, in Perry Township outside the city, please contact the commissioner's office directly. And I do want to thank Ms. Purdy and Mr. LaRue and our building department for all your work on getting these applications organized. I know it's, it's, it's a lot of paperwork, but we, we're really happy to offer this program. So is there anything else that I have neglected? Commissioner Githens, anything else?
I would just, when should we come back for our work session?
Yes, so, um, let me look at the time, it's 11:10. Can we come back at 11:20 for the work session? Yes, okay, great. So we'll be, we'll resume here at 11:20 for the work session. And until then, and our next meeting is January 24th for the Board of Commissioners, but our work session is in 10 minutes. Until then, we are adjourned. Thank you.